All right, welcome everybody. It is November 1st, that feels true. 5:00 PM for our Committee of the Whole meeting. Councilmember Rose Alba is excused. And we'll start out with approval of the minutes for Committee of the Whole, October 4th. Any corrections, concerns? Motion?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole for October 4th, 2022.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Of adopting, thank you. Okay, the minutes have been approved. We've got three discussion items tonight. We'll start out with discussion on the fraud risk assessment with Brenda. Hi Brenda.
Hello, so this is part of our crossing our i's, dotting our t's as the audit gets through. Next year I have it on the schedule to do in July, instead of waiting until now. So the state auditor's office, a few years ago, instituted a fraud risk assessment. I think they got tired of the very, very small entities in the city, of the boards on those entities not paying any attention to what was actually going on in their city, and not having some of the internal controls that you should have in place, such as the person who balances the bank is not the person who writes the checks, et cetera, that kind of thing. So they put together this fraud risk assessment, and then I'm supposed to talk about it to you on how the city is doing. So we earned 355 out of the 395 points that are available. We have, because of our size, it's fairly simple to have separation of duties. Our treasurer and our treasurer's clerk do not balance the bank account. That is up to Emily Barton, and she has no contact with any cash coming into the city, cash checks or credit cards. It's all, she only gets to look at the numbers, not actually touch the cash. We have all of those things, and we monitor what's going on in the different areas that do collect cash, and make sure that we are following good controls in those areas also. We have written policies in all of the areas that they have listed. Like our purchasing cards, we have good policies to track those, make sure people are only using the city credit card for what they're supposed to. Occasionally someone will mess up and pull out their city US bank card instead of their personal one. Most of the time they are in our office before we even know that they have done that, reimbursing us. And we have never had anyone who did that as a purposeful trying to steal from the city. So the other ones, I am a CPA, so we get points for that. I also have, I, Emily, and Joanne all have accounting degrees, so we get points for that. We do continuing education. And then the other one we're still working on, well, we haven't, you all have taken the class that the auditor offers in the, once every four years you're supposed to take the education that says that, basically it goes through separation of duties, grandma, various education, so that you guys are aware of what your city should be doing. So we come down to 355 of the 395 points. That's very low risk. There are two things that we are not doing. We do not have an internal audit function. We are not big enough, nor do we want to pay for that. The state auditor suggests that we have other cities come in and audit us. We audit them. None of us know how to do an audit. That's not what we do. So nobody's actually jumped on that. We just settle for not being perfect when it comes to this. So, but our risk is very low. So now that we've discussed this, I will have the mayor sign it. I'll sign it, we'll take a copy, and then by the end of December, we will send it to the state auditor. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, update on the Intermountain Power Agency with Blaine Hackey and Cameron.
Hi.
Good to see ya.
Thanks Kat. I'm Blaine Hackey, general manager of Power Department. I also have a guest visitor with me. But let me introduce him, and then I'll turn the time over to him. He has a PowerPoint presentation that he will present. In past months, we've talked about different resources that Murray has. Murray, we've talked about federal hydro, and our landfill gas, and several different coal-fired plants that we take energy from. Tonight, we're gonna focus on one particular resource, and that's our IPA, Intermountain Power Agency. And that's the one that's located out by Delta. We have 4% entitlement in that plant. It's a big plant. It's, its capacity is 18 Murray cities, if we were producing that 100%. So we have good partners with that, and John can explain that. But we want to talk about historical IPA that started back in the 70s, where we are today, and then what's gonna happen in the future. You've heard of a lot of headlines about hydrogen being used to make electricity, and natural gas plant, and demolition of a coal-fired plant out on the deserts of Delta. That's what we're gonna talk about tonight. And we open it, any questions you might have? We're trying to do this, I'm on the IPA Board of Directors, and we're trying to do this to all 23 Utah cities that have participation in the plant. Murray's one of the 23. And so there's a couple of us are out doing dog and pony shows to the Oak Cities, and the Canoches, and the Milfords, and the Casevilles, and Logans, and tonight, John Ward, who I'm gonna introduce, is gonna do his dog and pony to Murray. John Ward is our public relations consultant for IPA. He's a paid consultant, he does all of our PR work. He does a lot of our lobbying, some of our lobbying with Utah Legislature. He comes well-versed, he's a former Murray citizen. And so we'll turn the time over to him, and maybe both of us can answer questions afterwards, unless you have some questions right now about the direction of this meeting.
I'm just gonna say, not only was he a former Murray citizen, former Murray council member.
Yes, he was. I'll let him handle that one.
Well, thank you, I thank you mayor for pointing that out. So we can, little bit of deja vu. I used to sit where councilmember Carter sits there for a little while. Well, it was a long time ago, but you know, I haven't changed hairstyle since then, but we're, you know, we're good to go. It's great to be back here, and we really appreciate you making the time for us to do this. This is kind of a complicated project, and any discussion about what's going on down at the power plant in Delta really requires a little bit of understanding about this thing called the Intermountain Power Agency. So the Intermountain Power Agency was organized in 1977. All right, the 23 Utah municipalities that own IPA were formed by an act of the legislature, and they are the owners. So Murray, along with 22 other cities, are the owners of the Intermountain Power Project. Now that's the picture there is that 1,800 megawatt power plant, you can see it from 50 miles away when you go to the sand dunes down in Millard County. And, but that's not the whole project. The project also includes two transmission systems. There's a northern transmission system that connects into the western grid, and there's also a southern transmission system, which is a direct current power line that goes straight to Southern California. And this whole enterprise commenced operation in 1986. It's been a tremendous example of regional energy cooperation ever since it went online. So as I mentioned before, IPA, the Utah cities own the project, but there's a larger group that includes six rural electric cooperatives and six large municipal utilities down in Southern California that participate in the project. So Murray and the other Utah cities own it, and then there's a series of power purchase contracts that bind in these other participants. And you can see by the map there, the Utah cities outlined, and then that big power line that's going down to California. Why is that important? As I mentioned before, this is a great example of regional energy cooperation. And the reason the Utahns got into this back in the 1970s was here was an opportunity for entities, as you know, I would say as small as Murray, but let's say as small as Oak City, Utah, to participate in a project that's got economies of scale. There's no way those 23 Utah, if you add it up all the power demand of all of those 23 Utah cities, it wouldn't add up to one of these two generating units that were down there. So it gives you the opportunity to participate in an energy project with scale. It also, well, we'll talk in a minute about another feature, but if you look at that left chart there, this is confusing pie charts. Those are the generation entitlement shares. And you can see that the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power has the largest entitlement share. The Utah cities have an entitlement share of just under 14%. The percentages on there are not by accident. The governance for this entity is set up so that the Utahns can't make any decisions without the California partners. The California participants can't make decisions without the Utah partners. The structure forces us to work together. Now, that right chart shows a different thing. This is the huge benefit to Murray City and to the other Utah participants, is we have an agreement for sale of excess power, you know, the ASREP, as they call it. And this is unique. I've done a lot of work with a lot of energy projects around the country. I've never seen anything like this before. Basically what it is for Murray City and the other Utah participants is a big insurance policy. Everybody in this, everybody in this project are nonprofit entities. They're cities and rural electric cooperatives. Nobody's making a profit on this. And it's structured so that whoever is taking the power is who pays the bills. Now, these excess power sales agreements give Murray City and other cities the ability to unilaterally lay off their power to some of those California purchasers if you don't want to take it. And that means in years where Murray is not taking their generation entitlement share, Murray's not having to pay for the plant. In times when Murray wants to take their share, they can call it back seasonally, and you then pay your share just in the power generation billings that you do. So again, this is like an insurance policy with no premium. In the years when this works for your portfolio, you can take it and pay for it. In the years when you don't, you're not paying anything for this project. Again, I've never seen anything like this elsewhere in the country. And if you look over the, if you look over the history of the project over the, since 1986, the Californians have taken most of the power from the project, which means they've paid the bills. If we look at this year, and Blaine can probably talk about this in a minute, but if you look at this year, this summer Murray did take their power back, and it ended up saving you a lot of money. So it's a great deal for the Utah participants. I'm not gonna dwell on these two slides here, but obviously, it's also been a great benefit to the state of Utah. Lots of high-paying jobs in central Utah, lots of coal that was purchased, lots of transportation services. And one other thing to keep in mind about this project is, this project was developed with no taxpayer dollars. All the costs of this project, the financing for this project is done through Intermountain Power Agency's ability to issue municipal bonds, and then all of the costs for running the project and paying that back, those bonds come through the power billings. So there have been no economic development incentives, there have been no taxpayer dollars going to this project. It's completely self-sufficient. Additionally to that, because all of these entities are nonprofit, they shouldn't be paying taxes. But part of the deal, when it was developed back in the 70s, was that it would pay taxes. So in addition to not using taxpayer dollars, we are paying taxes. And so there's a fee in lieu of ad valorem tax, which is the equivalent of a property tax. There's a grocery receipts tax, which is the equivalent of an income tax. And those tax benefits to the state have totaled over $720 million now over the life of the project. So we came to a point though, several years ago, when changes in energy policy in California came to bear. Again, remember, who's been buying most of the energy? The California entities. And several years ago, California essentially outlawed coal-fired power. Now, we were able to continue operating the project while we had the current contracts in place. Those contracts were grandfathered in, but at the end of the contracts with the current set of parties, we were going to lose those California customers. So there was an effort, this was 10 years ago. There was an effort to see if we could find other people to take over the coal plants. As we noted, they're huge. You know, the Utah participants on their own couldn't even make up one unit, even if you dedicated 100% of your power needs to it, which would be a stupid thing to do, Blaine will tell you. But we couldn't find anyone to take those, we couldn't find anyone to take those coal units in. You know, other entities, other utilities in the West are also moving away from coal. They had no appetite for it. And we also had some pretty significant regulatory obstacles to keeping the plant open. If we were going to continue to run this plant after these power purchase agreements expire in a couple more years, there would literally be hundreds of millions of dollars of additional investment that would be required for environmental controls to bring the plant up to current regulatory standards. And one in particular, there's a coal ash regulation that went in place in 2015. If we were to continue operating the plant after these contracts expired, we would have to invest a couple hundred million dollars to handle that coal ash differently. And if we announced today that we were going to keep it out, EPA could walk in and shut down the plant within 130 days. So there's, in addition to the market factors that moved us away from coal, there are some pretty serious environmental regulatory issues to deal with as well. So the board on which Blaine serves didn't take this decision lightly. Again, these discussions have been going on for over a decade. But you know, the board of IPA really faced a decision point here. And I like to compare this to what happened just 200 miles south of the plant, down at the Navajo plant in Page, Arizona. That's the picture on the right there. The Navajo Generating Station, similar size as IPP, similar customer makeup as IPP, similar age as IPP. That plant's already been demolished. That's the big explosions there, taking it down. It's a flat spot in the desert now with nothing going on out there. The easy thing for IPA to do would have been to make the same decision. Well, you know, it's been good knowing you. Californians who paid most of the bills, you know, all right, you can pay to take it down now, and you know, we'll just wrap this up and call it good. But that's not what the IPA Board did. What the IPA Board did was say, you know, what else can we do at this plant? We've got these transmission systems, we've got rail, we've got land, we've got water, we've got all this existing infrastructure here. What can we do to keep something going at that site and continue to have these benefits for the Utah member cities? And what they came up with was the IPP renewed project that we are embarking on now. And again, I appreciate your time tonight, but we've really reached a great point in this project because there's lots of big yellow iron moving around down there now, and we're actually starting to build this thing. And it seemed like this would be a good time to make sure you all know what's going on. So we announced the decision to close the coal units back in 2017. Those power sales agreements that bind the 35 parties together have been renegotiated and reextended for another 50 years. So the project is now good under these kind of terms until 2077. And we came up with a, we came up with a project of building new generating facilities at the plant. This is gonna be about a $2 billion investment to build natural gas generating facilities at the plant. Those natural gas generating facilities will also be capable of using 30% green hydrogen when they start up. And it's also facilitating another development right across the fence with a consortium called ACES, who is developing the hydrogen production and storage capabilities, which is an additional $2 billion worth of investment. So we're looking at, you know, $4 billion of investment in new energy facilities that will be able to run for another 20, 30-plus years. The, I'm just gonna quickly go through this. I mentioned that we're using hydrogen. Just to give you a little background on this, it's, it's, it sounds new, it's kind of not new. All of the elements of our hydrogen project of what we're going to be doing here are mature technologies. This is not a science fair experiment. This is scaling up existing known proven technologies and applying them at utility scale. It is by a happy coincidence that this power plant was built right over the top of a geologic salt dome. We're talking a mile underground, there's this big, I mean big, five miles around, couple of thousand feet deep salt dome. Now, these salt domes are all over the place in Texas, and Arkansas, and Louisiana. That's where they do the salt cavern storage of lots of petrochemical products and so forth. By a lucky coincidence, this power plant is built over the only one of this size and quality in the whole Great Basin. So we will be taking, we will be taking excess renewable power. There's times a day when there's more solar and wind than people need, and so they're turning it off, or sometimes paying people to take it, to get their tax credit. We'll be able to take that essentially free renewable energy during those times of day in the year. We'll use that renewable energy to split water into hydrogen and oxygen. We'll capture the hydrogen, put it in salt caverns that are solution mined deep underground. No, you can't drive around in it. It's a pipe that goes down, and they're the size of the Empire State Building, and nobody's ever gonna go down there, okay? But we can put hydrogen into those in the spring and fall, and then in the summer and winter, when you need that power, we take the hydrogen back out of the salt caverns, run it through the gas turbines, generate electricity. So this is long-term renewable energy storage. Batteries are great, batteries work for periods of hours. Think of this as a long-term battery, because we can store that hydrogen in the spring and fall, save it seasonally, bring it out months later, and still have it work. We've completed the initial round of financing on this. As I mentioned before, construction has started. Just a little bit more background on hydrogen, because you're gonna hear about this stuff. You're gonna hear about colors of hydrogen. And actually, there's like 20 different colors now, but green hydrogen, the three main ones are gray hydrogen, blue hydrogen, and green hydrogen. It's all hydrogen, all right? The hydrogen doesn't change color. Hydrogen is just a little H molecule floating around out there. The colors refer to how it's made. So most of the hydrogen that's used today is made, is gray hydrogen. It's made by breaking apart natural gas, all right? Blue, it makes a lot, you know, it makes a lot of carbon dioxide. It uses a lot of water. You can see the water use there, 16.3 liters per kilogram of hydrogen. Blue hydrogen is when you take that gray hydrogen, capture that carbon, and store it somehow to keep from emitting the greenhouse gas, all right? So that's an additional water demand to make your gray hydrogen blue. This green hydrogen that we'll be making, where we're just using electrolysis to split those water molecules directly, zero carbon emissions, and uses actually less water than making hydrogen the traditional way from fossil fuels. One of the things we hear about a lot, because we live in an arid state that's having a drought, is, oh, you're gonna be taking our precious Utah water and using it to make hydrogen. Well, you know, take a look at these metrics. When IPP was built, it went out and got enough water rights to run four coal-fired units. Only two of them actually got built. So the project has rights to about 45,000 acre-feet of water. That's the big line there. The most we've ever actually used for power generation is about 25,000 acre-feet, the bracket on the right. Right now, we're using about half of that, because the project isn't running at full speed like it used to. So that's about 12,500 acre-feet a year. We can make all the hydrogen we need to run 100% hydrogen fuel, and run those gas plants for less water than we're using right now running the coal plant at half the speed. So you know, when you hear they're going to be using our precious water for this, we're going to be saving water over what we have traditionally done. By the way, none of that water's gone to waste. The project leases its unused water back to the agricultural community. We've had 100% beneficial use of the water resource in every year. So construction is underway. That drill rig that you don't really appreciate the size, is about the size of a 10-story building. It's already completed the drill for the first salt cavern. It's starting now on the drill for the second salt cavern. That other photo there shows the underground work going on on the power plant side of the fence. All of this development will be done, and the new generating units will be coming online in the spring of 2025. So in conclusion, you know, the IPA Board, of which Blaine's a member, had an opportunity to walk away from this and just say, yeah, we're done. They didn't do that, you know? And if you think this is a United Nations negotiation, put 35 parties stretching from Los Angeles to Oak City at around a table, and negotiate some things. That's what they've done, to leverage that existing infrastructure that exists down there in Millard County and on the power lines. There's no state tax support or economic development incentives involved in this project. It's gonna continue to provide some economic benefits to the state by keeping something going at that site. Most important, I think, to this body is the fact that it preserves that favorable entitlement layoff structure for your municipalities. You'll have the same deal in the new project that you had in the old project, where if it works for your resource portfolio, you can take it and pay for it. If it doesn't work for your resource portfolio, you don't pay any of the bills. So if you think hydrogen is a crazy idea, guess what? You have no money at risk. If it works, you've got all the benefits to be able to participate there. There's gonna be significant reductions in carbon emissions and water use from this, and the project is already serving as an anchor tenant in that region, attracting other economic development to the area. Literally the eyes of the whole world. I've got a file on my computer. There's green hydrogen projects happening all over the world, and in almost every story, they're talking about what's going on in Utah, because this is really capturing international attention for what's been put together here. So with that, I appreciate your time very much. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
I just have a comment. Blaine, you've been talking about this for years. I mean, it's really cool that it's finally coming to fruition. I mean, it's not just this kind of crazy thing out there that we never understood, but now it's actually happening. So it's pretty cool.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks Diane. Let's get a party bus, and we'll go down and we'll show you what's happening. It's about two and a half hour drive, but it's very well worth it.
I think it'd be really worthwhile.
Yeah. If I got just a second longer, Catherine. Let me kind of wrap up with, I appreciate John being here. He's been with this program or with this project longer than I have. I've been on the board for about 10 years, involved with it for, you know, 20, but not on the board. And John was way before then. We've got some issues perhaps on the state legislature this next go-around, this next session, that we want to keep you abreast of. We'll do that through maybe the mayor's update every week, but there may be some help we need you with, letters, or just to keep you updated what's happening up there. We're not sure what's coming down the pike, but there may be something. John mentioned our partners. Our partners are amazing. We have the 23 Utah cities. We have the six COOPS, or REAs. An example of that would be like Dixie Escalante, Arcane Power, Moon Lake. Those are the COOPS. It's a little bit different than a MUNI, but it's not quite an IOU. So MUNI's a municipal power system. A COOP is quasi-not-for-profit organization, but investor-owned utilities would be like Rocky Mountain Power. So we have those three segments, well, no, we have those two segments involved. Six Californians, of which our partners are amazing. Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, as John mentioned in this graph, has 48% entitlement to the project. But they take, I don't know, 90%, 85% of the energy that comes out of the plant goes to LA. They're the ones paying our mortgage on this plant. In 2025, 2027, they're gonna hand us the keys to the car and say, thanks for doing business with us. Here's a coal plant, which, you know, what are you gonna do with that? Type of thing. But they've paid for it all, except for the occasional time and we've recalled power. So it's like renting without having to pay rent. I mean, or owning without having to pay a mortgage payment. They've done it for us, and that's an amazing part of this agreement. As John mentioned, with this new agreement that kicks in with the new hydrogen/natural gas plant, we will still have a recall capability where we can, on a season basis, every six-month basis, we can call back power as we need it. Now, we're not sure what the cost is gonna be. In fact, we don't know what the cost is gonna be with the existing coal plant from month to month.[1729.62] to month. We have a good idea. And what happens there is, me and my staff will compare the IPA project to other resources that we have, and if the IPA resource is going to be less power than, say, another resource we're looking at, we will call back IPA for six-month segment, and we have to crunch the numbers. We did that this past summer. We haven't done that every summer, nor have we done it every winter. Historically, I remember back in 2001, 2002, when the Enron situation just hit the western grid so hard, Murray was plowing through $3 million a month with our power bills, which was, you know, buku dollars more than usual. We, we lost a lot of money with that Enron situation. We called back IPA the following summer and the succeeding years, where we avoided the $400 a megawatt hour costs on the market with a $60 resource at IPA. And then the market stabilized after that, through the 2007, through 14, 15, 16. We didn't call back IPA for quite a while, because we found cheaper resources out there that may have been just going to the market, and may have been installing, well, landfill gas project we did in 2007, 2008. So we didn't see the need to call back IPA. Well, this past summer, we realized that the volatility of the market was going to be pretty tough. So this time last year, last October, this time last year, my staff and I got together and we decided, we, we see, we see a lot of these coal plants that are demolished, like the Navajo plant that John mentioned. The market is starting to squeeze a little bit tighter. There's less kilowatt hours to go around, and we could see the market was going to go pretty high. It was a good guess. It was, it was a gamble, but we ordered lots of natural gas so that we could run our turbines. They're located on 48 South. We ran them 18 hours a day, from June, July, August, September, about four months out of the year, more than we did other years, but we bought gas at $4 a decotherm, and during the summer months, Mayor, how much was it? I've told you his number before.
Ha!
Twelve. There's about $10, $10 or $12 a decotherm. We saw, sorry, I didn't want to impound you.
Quiz.
So we bought gas for $4, we sold it for-
He put me on the spot, because I was talking about this with him yesterday.
He what? He's not a good student. So, anyway, we made that call, but we also called back 19 megawatts of IPA, something we hadn't done for about five years. By calling back 19 megawatts of IPA, we supplanted or we supplemented our resource portfolio and didn't have to go to the market. Well, the market reached $1,000 a megawatt hour, and we bought it for 65 from IPA. So the 19 megawatts we bought at IPA saved us $2.3 million last year, Murray City alone. Okay. Do you, do you remember how many megawatt hours we purchased?
It was 2.375, something like that. I'm pretty close, aren't I? I remember that number.
Yeah, so we bought 40 million kilowatt hours from the plant on a recall basis, and Murray, by not going to the market, saved $2.3 million. So that's the benefit of this plant. Even if we hadn't called back this, at the plant, there's still a benefit. This is still an arrow in our quiver. We still have a plant out there that somebody's paying the mortgage on, and, and we can recall it occasionally. We didn't do anything for this winter, because we can cover our loads, but next summer, we're going to do the same thing. We're going to recall the power, and we'll see what happens. But that's a success story. I don't always bring success stories, but that's a good one. One final comment, Cap, 30 seconds longer. John mentioned that the, the eyes of the world are watching this project, because that's true. A hydrogen plant this size, I don't think is available anywhere. It's a technology to a size of an 800-megawatt plant that's just not out there. Eyes are watching this, but once again, it's not our wallet paying for it right now. The only way we'll pay for it is if we ever call back power in 2027, 28, 29, 30. And we don't know what that cost is going to be, but we'll, we'll always have that in our quiver for 50 years. We'll have this plant. The other eyes of the world are watching those small modular reactors that we're looking at, you know, the Corvallis trip. The eyes of the world are watching that one too. So you might say Murray is really being scrutinized. I don't know if that's the right word, but there's two projects we're looking at that are, are cutting edge, that nowhere else in the world is catching those two. So I like to think that we're stable and moving on, but we're losing a coal plant. The sad part of it, we're losing a coal plant that's totally operational, and because of the environmental issues and the cost issues and political issues in a state not of ours, we're having to shut that plant down. So it was an emotional vote from the IPA board when we had to make that vote in 2015, 2017, whatever it was, knowing full well that the central Utah economy was going to be affected a lot by shutting a coal-fired plant down. Now, the hydrogen plant slash natural gas plant will provide some jobs, but there will be some people that will lose their jobs, and it will affect the delta economy. Hopefully, the pop-up industries around that will, will get some of those jobs, but I'm through, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Thank you for your time.
Am I making a really angry face?
John, do you have any final words?
Yes.
I thank John for coming with this dog and pony show.
Thank you. We appreciate all that information. It was great.
Did you-
Yeah, can I ask a question, Blaine? When you, John, when you said they're, they're in the salt mine, is the, is it the Redmond Salt area? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, no, the Redmond Salt's great stuff. I put it on my fish.
I know, it's good, it's the best.
Yeah, no, that's, that, that's three counties over and south, and it's a different kind of a salt formation. That's one that where you go in with a continuous miner, and you actually can walk right into the salt and do it. This particular salt dome is, you've got to drill through 1,500 feet of, you know, shale and mudstone and all that kind of stuff before you hit the top of this, and it, it's literally a dome. It was formed geologically like a big bubble way underground. And so you, you drill about 1,500 feet through the overburden, and then you drill down into the salt with, you know, way down. So the salt caverns that I'm telling you about, I know cavern sounds like you can walk into it, but that's not it. You, you drill way down to the bottom, then you pump hot water down there, and you dissolve the salt, and then you withdraw that, that drill, and by controlling the level of the salinity, there's, there's 600 of these caverns in service around the world. Again, it's mature technology. But with the hot water, you hollow out essentially this hole that's way underground, that's the size of the Empire State Building. There are four salt caverns in operation in Delta now. They're storing propane and butane and other petrochemical projects. We're going to build two more to start for this project. They're under construction right now, but it's basically a pipe sticking in the ground. And so you'll put, you'll, you'll put the hydrogen in, store it there like a big tank, take it back out when you, when you need to use it. And then there's a big brine, all that salt you dissolved-
Right.
-comes out, there's a big brine pond out back. They haven't done it yet, but at some point, they're going to evaporate all that brine and make salt out of it too. Another add-on industry that comes with, with this.
Okay. I would like to go down.
You, you should.
Give me the address. I really, I want to-
Come on down. We love, we love to do field trips.
I love field trips.
We'll walk you through the coal plant, get up on the top of that thing, and, and that gives you a view of the whole lay of the land. You can see the construction going on next door, and the, and the salt cavern construction going on across the street.
Okay. Thank you, John.
You bet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, Rob, good to see you. Welcome. Looking forward to hearing from you.
So tonight, I'm supposed to- Tonight, I'm supposed to talk about IT, information technology, and how we serve the city and what we do. And so I only have about 200 slides, so just, you know, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. And we'll just go through it, and we'll talk, and then I'll answer any questions that you may have. And so information technology consists of three divisions, the GIS, IT, and programmers' division. Altogether, there's, should be 14, we have 13, but there's 14, you know, full-time positions in, in IT.
Are they all housed here in this building?
No, the GIS division is at the public works, and when the city hall is completed, they will move into a city hall with us. Currently, though, they are at the public works. And so the, the GIS division is the first division we're going to cover. It currently, we are, we are down one person in this division, but it consists of Scott Burrell, Talson Schultzka, and Justin Kulp. And these guys do a great job. They maintain the spatial data mapping and city works, as you can see. They work with all of the different departments and, and provide a lot of support for what their needs are for the GIS. And, and once again, GIS stands for Geographical Information Systems. They, they handle a lot of the, the mapping and all of the spatial data for, you know, for, for the city, which brings up this slide here. They manage and ensure quality and integrity in the data. They, they work with the people across all the different departments, and I mean all of them, and we'll give you a list of those. They, they maintain about six servers, and, and, and these are those, the Atlas holds the data. They, it's just called Atlas. I mean, it, it could be whatever. The GIS file, the cemetery provides information for, you can actually go to a plot and actually click on it, and it will expand it, and will give you information on that, and that's where the cemetery is. They do crystal reports, they do the GIS net for online, they provide online for maps for the city employees and for different departments. And then we also, they also provide support for city works, which is the work orders and inventory systems. The mapping, they produce effective maps, they, they work with the software. These are some of the examples of the maps that they provide, you know, anywhere from the city hall surplus to, we maintain, they even maintain the videos of all of the, you know, it's not a pretty job, but the sewage that goes in there, and they do the video, they store that, and, you know, and they keep track of that so that they can go back and reference it and keep, you know, see all the videos that are available. They provide, you know, monthly reports and, and reports for, for all of the, the different departments when necessary. This is the online that we provide for the city employees, where they can go in, and they can pull up the, the different maps, and, you know, and they can pull it up as, they have the garbage, fire, the, you know, all of the ones that are associated. They produce and maintain, how many maps do we maintain online there? Scott?
A lot. It's a lot. So we maintain quite a few maps for online for referencing, and so, and they do create tools, and, and, and they also serve the public if they come in and they need, they have needs and they need a map made of specific things for, within Murray City, they produce that for them as well, and, yeah. This is the, the Arc GIS online that we also do specific maps, and we also continue to serve up. Is there any questions so far? The city work software, once again, provides the work requests, and they also do tickets, resolve tickets and online work orders. And if somebody like leaves, and there's a message or online and says, we have graffiti, an online work request is created, and then it's sent to the department for them to clean it up, and, and so that's what the city works provides for. So, yeah. Once again, these are some of the, the city works that we, we provide or we create for. And the, the one there in the, the map city works activities, that's, that shows open tickets and where they need to be worked on, or if they've been resolved, so, yeah. So this is the, the list of all of the departments, basically everyone that they work with, information technology or the GIS, I should say, work with, and, and once again, the public and city council and everything else, so. IT. This is the IT team. This is Samantha, that's on the left, Danny, Ben, Ryan, the supervisor, he's up there somewhere hiding, yeah, there he is, Cameron, and then Isaac. This is the team that provides support for, you know, IT. To give you a little bit of an idea of what we do, we are responsible for every connection in the city. That's phones, data, wireless. Our job is to provide that support. So we, we support around 270 laptops, or I'm sorry, desktops, 155 laptops, 41 iPads, it just goes on. And so it really basically comes close to 1,000 connections that we provide support for, and, and make sure that we, you know, like I said, we provide desktop support, we re-image things when they need to be done, we also provide support for the servers, and I'll go into that in a little bit as well. Currently, we connect up 23 buildings on a fiber network, so all of our buildings are, are together on a fiber network that, that we provide support for. And in that, I mean, you have to keep in mind, you know, there are switches and everything that are associated, and we have to replace those and keep those connected, and, and make sure all of that is, is, is going. Is there any questions so far? And we have here? Okay, we're moving on. The servers that we provide for, these are just a few. I can't, I, I don't, I won't name them all, but these are some of the servers that we provide, the Tyler. There are four servers that provide support for the city as far as like, the Tyler system is, is really basically the, the city. It provides for the accounting, economic development, I mean, all of them, I, I, yeah. Human resource, all of them, even, you know, passports area or records, we provide support and servers where that's what the Tylers does. So we have about, it looks like eight or nine systems that are to the cloud right now that we have. So there's the Versa-Turn for the police, the Chorus for the courts, our Office 365 is to the cloud in our exchange. The Sportsman is currently onsite, but they're talking about moving that to the cloud as well, so that will, that will be moved out there. The Okta that we do two-factor with now, that everyone loves so much in the city, that's to the cloud, E Prosecutor, HRN online, and our SolarWinds help desk. So we've got quite a few systems that are out to the cloud and that we provide support for those as well.
Okta's the new one?
Yes, Okta's, Okta's what we put in, and we were actually putting it in, you know, in August and July, but we finished rolling it out here in September, at the end of September, and that's for the two factors, so that you have to put in, you know, yes, it's me on your cell phone or, or a, a number, you have to put in a number that lets you know that you're logging in, and it's authenticating. So we'll be finishing doing that and rolling that out to the servers as well. So we're, we've really tightened down the, the security, and we're going to continue to do that as well. But that's really what our to-the-cloud applications are right now. The web hosting we do for employee service, like when they do their time entry, and they can log in from home, and they can do that. We, we, we do customer self-service with Tyler. Both of those applications are Tyler, the server system. And then we do the Murray City, that's actually hosted, oh, I forgot, what's the name of the web hosting out there? Civic Plus, thank you. Civic Plus actually does the hosting, but Samantha does maintaining of the, of the system and does the changes that are needed and updates the, the web on the Civic Plus, but it's hosted. We felt like we wanted to have that offsite, and I think it's a good idea to have that. That way, if there's an emergency, we can update it, and it's not dependent on whether we're up or not, so. Waste reservation portal, that was built by Gordon and Adam, did a really good job on that, so you can reserve, you know, the, the system or to reserve a, a waste trashcan, and, and then our SolarWinds is also web-hosted as well, so. Now, I, I could, I could tell you what this is, but it, it's, it's really basically our system. Everything that we have is really virtualized servers on a big server farm that we do, and I'll just press the button on that. And so, because I could, I could explain it to you, but it, it's, it's kind of a difficult, but I wanted to include that. The wireless connectivity we provide for, we have Wi-Fi in the park. The courts, we provide wireless for, we support that. We provide support for the library, and down at Public Works, the Fire, Power, and the Senior Center, we provide service for. And, and all, some of those are connected, but most of those are all separate wireless systems that we provide support for, and that the city provides for the residents. And so, so this is security. This is what we're doing, and we will continue to do more things to provide support. Tech MFA, Palo Alto firewalls, we, we currently have, for the different systems, we have eight, and they're, those are in the upper quadrant for firewalls, are very, very good ones. We have Sentinel One Security, we do- We do web filtering, spam filtering. And interestingly, I think I did about two years ago, I did the total on the spam that we receive and I think it was 2.1 million spam emails, just the city employees that we receive and that we filter out and we're able to do that with our filtering, our web filtering and spam filtering servers. And so we do that. We do Global Protect. It allows you to log in and do VPNs and work from home with your laptops. And then just encryption, all of our offsite backups. We go offsite, everything's backed up and it's all encrypted. And so that's IT. And then lastly, the last division, but not the least, is the programming division. Gordon sent me the Professional Mouse Clickers group, so I went ahead and left that in there. The members on this group is Adam Decker, Gordon in the middle. He's the supervisor and then Brittany Blackhurst, Gordon Cook. And they do a marvelous job. They provide support on the programs for mainly the Tyler system, which this is really all of what they support for and what they provide. And they provide reporting and resolve issues. And, you know, and like I said, they also did, created the container rental software online and they do that, but finance, utility billing, huge, huge thing that they provide support for that. They do a lot of, you know, the reports for the end of year and for all of that Brenda requires. And they just do a great job. And you can see there's a lot of modules that are in here that they provided for. And did we get, I don't, is Tyler Meeting Manager in there? Because that's going to be in there too. So, yeah. And then the additional computer systems that they do, they also provide support and run the IVR system. That's the phone system when you call in, interactive voice response. So they provide that. RVI, which is our old systems and they still, the AS400 is still up. It's going to be shut down here eventually, but I can't say when, eventually. So. And that is IT. Quick, down and dirty. Anything, any questions?
Any questions?
Fancy slideshow though. I mean, the way they disappeared and moved. No, I'm telling you, you're good.
Yeah. I had a little bit of time to prepare for it, Mayor, so thank you.
Are you, we noticed the IT department moving into City Hall. Do we know that yet or not?
Well, I guess it would be all of us that will move there, but we probably, like I was telling the mayor today, we will probably move in first and make sure everything is working prior to. And then I think they're talking about department by department, moving them in and trying to do that. And because if we do it all at once, it's going to be chaos, especially for us. But if we do them department by department, I think that will be a lot easier for us.
I think what will happen is you'll have IT move in and so will Tammy. She'll move in the same time with IT because she can hardly stand being here.
And then we'll lock the doors, security, and then, you know, no one can get in.
That'll be bad.
Change the locks on it.
Change the lock access, no. But, no, I think that's kind of what they're planning on doing. I think, Mary, April, is that, is that the timeframe to move into the new City Hall?
What did you say?
April?
April. Well, March, we're thinking, I think it could be, you know, I hate to say this because then all of a sudden it could be before. But look, I can't say April. April, we should be pretty, isn't that horrible? It should be pretty safe, but I think it'll be a little earlier.
So hopefully March gives us enough time to get in there and do what we need to do ahead of time so that everything is up and working. And then that way, the move over there is a little bit easier than trying to get it done.
And then Tammy gets to move in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For everything.
We know it takes a lot of technology to keep the city running and we appreciate you.
Well, thank you for it.
Thank you.
You guys are awesome.
All right. Well, that is it for the agenda today. So if there are no objections, we are adjourned until the 6:30 council meeting. Thank you.